There.
You got it?
Okay.
You're good.
We are good. Great. Oh. Welcome to our Lincolnville Select Board meeting for Monday, December eighth. To start the evening. November Ray, you read the quote plate.
I'll work on it. Yeah, yeah. The best way to enhance freedom in other lands is to demonstrate here that our democratic system is worthy of emulation. Jimmy Carter.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak to a non-agenda item? No one rushing to the podium will move forward to the administrative report.
A couple of things. Our beach bathroom structure. Has experienced a little bit of, I guess I would call it vandalism damage. Somebody very neatly removed some siding from the building. Oddly, and I don't know if the two were related. Someone also spent some time behind the porta potties, pushed them out a little bit, created a little hiding spot. We reported both incidences to Waldo County Sheriff's who said they would add that to their rounds of places to look. And we've ordered materials for siding. Both half a dozen pieces of a hardy plank on the parking lot side removed from the just above the ground to the bottom of the bulletin boards and full width and apparently taken with them because
Okay.
no evidence of them being around. Odd. The only other thing I have beyond the agenda is the offer from our council to provide a training for the planning board. Took place last week and by all accounts, people I've talked to went very well, very informative for both ways, both ways.
So I'm sorry. Yeah. Did we get any free feedback on how on the efficacy of that? Did the word get through? The message get through, I guess, is the question to the planning board from the town attorney? Do we get any feedback along those lines?
Uh, planning board member that I got the most feedback from said it was very informative and helpful.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions for David?
So just back to the damage down to the beach.
Yep.
So it was reported to Waldo County and they indicated that they would add that to the rounds here in town?
Yep.
Did they indicate when their rounds were? I didn't talk to Matt did, so I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But I presume probably not.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Excellent. Moving forward to meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here unless announced otherwise. Here at the town office, Conservation Commission is scheduled to meet Thursday, December eleventh, four P M. The Waldo County Budget Public Hearing is scheduled for Friday, December twelfth, six P M at the County Commissioner's Courtroom in Belfast, which is on Spring Street, thirty-nine B Spring Street. Select Board will be talking about that a little later in the meeting and the Select Board meets next on Monday, December twenty-second, six P M.
Excellent. And any upcoming community events? Being done, I will move forward to the meeting minutes and before we go there, we have Vice Chair Dunn attending remotely and so all votes this evening will be done by the roll. And with that, I will look for a motion regarding the minutes from November twenty-fourth.
I move that the board approve in November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Oh.
Okay. Vice Chair Dunn, your vote?
Yes.
Member Lee? Yes. Member Ray?
Yes.
Remember Tarantino?
Yes.
Great. Next item on our agenda, Rory Seliger is asked to come and talk to us. Yeah, you're right up. About sidewalks and streetblocks.
Hi, I'm Rory Seliger. I'm a resident of Lincolnville, have been for sixteen years. I live at five, five, five Hope Road, which is two houses over down from the school, same side. I have three sons. One of them is still at Lincolnville in fifth grade. So I was asking today to talk to you about getting more lights on Main Street. But before I do that, did you want to say something before I start? I just realized I just started.
No, actually.
Okay.
One being you, two addresses.
Okay. All right. Back to what I was, my notes. So I was asking for more lights down from the school down to and down Main Street to the library and the because are there's too much distance between the second light and the third light. So there's, it's actually pretty dark because they're not very close together. So we have one at the store. We have, I walk my dog down here all the time, so I know him really well. So I have one at the store and one in front of Walters and then another one down at the library, I believe. Am I missing one? So it's really not lit and I was asking to have more lights put on because there's more traffic now, thanks to Google and redirecting people. And there's also big trucks that come down our main street that a lot of people use and walk on. And it's getting darker earlier and that happens almost six months out of our twelve months of the year. And for kids' safety as well as other pedestrians. So that was what I was asking for is just to get a couple more lights. So it's lit up a little bit more. And that would be so appreciative. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up, I, I came to this meeting before to propose us getting sidewalks. And that was for the safety of the kids. My biggest concern is with the kids leaving the school or after we drop our kids off, there's no, when you turn out of the school on the right down to my house, there's no speed limit or the blinking light. So a lot of parents come out of there and they're going pretty fast over that hill down to Petunia Pump. And my son walks to school that way, right on the left. So it's, it's very scary sometimes. So I was asking, I know that it was a lot of money. The state was going to meet us halfway, but it was a lot of money to do all the sidewalks and they already had a plan to do one down by the boat. The sailing school down to the lake. But I was wondering if we could just start with just doing from the school to Petunia Pump because the Main Street actually has two, I mean, we walk on there and there is room for people to walk. It's on, you know, in the dirt and it's on, and when we, they plow and stuff, it's a little bit harder, but there is space on Main Street. But anyways, I was just proposing to see if we could somehow afford to do the sidewalk from the school to Petunia Pump. And that's it.
Any questions, Lori?
Has there been any consideration of when you're, it sounds like you're talking about your kids specifically. I know we have a lot of the kids in this town that actually walk, but it is, there is a path that I believe it, doesn't it? About your property from the school to the library? Because we're down into the woods, the nature.
They use that anymore. It wasn't really cleared.
Yeah, there were kids on it the other day.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Saw them coming out of the library.
Oh, they must take the younger kids there still. Do that.
What's that?
Oh, I thought it was much further down.
That might be. I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's down by the soccer fields. That's where it goes down to the left, way down at the end. So that's not really.
Okay. I'm just asking because of options. That's all. I'm not saying we don't need sidewalks. We need sidewalks everywhere.
Yeah.
The big thing is money.
Yeah.
No, I, I get that. Okay.
And that one, it does go down, but it also comes out where all the docks are, that where we put the docks in that parking lot. That's actually where that path comes down. So my son and the residents that walk, there's two boys on Main Street and then there's some kids on Heel Road that ride their bikes, which is also scary to be riding their bikes on that. So, yeah. So it's not that direction. It's this direction. Anyways, anything else?
Other questions or?
I don't have a question. I think it's a great idea and I like the idea of asking DOT to talk to us since it's a state road. So we're limited in what we can do.
Yeah, no, I just can imagine that. Yeah, because there's a state road in the section that you would like to see is two thirty-five, right? Yeah. So I'm wondering how, I'm just trying to imagine how that, like, if we were to contact DOT, DOT would have come down here, do a sidewalk like they did three, four years ago, how that would differ? And if it would actually be if DOT could do a smaller project like that, would entertain that without doing a whole village partner initiative, which was like redoing the road in the center, which we paid thirty percent of, I think, or some, or a, a good chunk of change to get sidewalks along, along there. Because I don't think you really, DOTs, I think they're going to say, unless we happen to be here already doing something road wise, it doesn't make a lot of sense financially. To also do a sidewalk. But that doesn't mean we can't redo, you know, let's reach out to DOT again. Said, hey, will you come down for this small section? That's basically what we're thinking about, right? Yeah. Yeah. I know it's. I think that's worth, worth making that over to. I myself, I'd be kind of surprised if they would, but that's, we haven't asked yet. So let's ask.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the community that'd like to speak to this matter?
Hi, Susan Silverio. I'm up on Proctor Road. We have wonderful roads. No traffic at all, but I was part of the the walk years ago when we walked with DOT and the Select Board. And they were interested in the project at that time. At that time, and I understand it's still that case, it's eighty percent them, twenty percent on the town, but half of that ten percent could be state, another half could, of that could be in-kind work. So there's other possibilities of contributing to that cost without taxpayer money. There are other people who might be able to contribute in some way to that work. I was on a meeting today that with thriving communities, which is M D O T. They're interested not only in getting people from A point A to be as fast as possible, but also in the communities that the state roads go through. There will be a survey coming out sometime soon. And they're looking at pinch points, the areas that are difficult, either too much congestion, too much traffic, presenting dangers for pedestrians and bicyclers. And so they'll be looking to the, the municipal officials to help distribute that survey. I will certainly help. And anybody with their own network can distribute that survey. The point is if they hear from people and I identified, we have two state highways coming through our town. There are two intersections. One is the crossroads, one is the Petunia Pump. And there's, aren't any stop signs or crosswalks at either of those places. So I alerted them on to that. So they'd like to hear from other people as well. And so I'll just toss that out.
Thank you. I know for myself, we definitely have an increase in traffic over the last several years coming through town, lots of different reasons. Definitely have kids walking down the streets at certain times. So looking at options for how we can get sidewalks, the little bit we did down by the library to the park is well utilized. I'm, I'm all for engaging DOT at this point to see what, what's feasible.
Yeah.
And we've just had some documents come from the state regarding Route One and different funding rates. Don't know how they apply to here, but something we need to, to learn more about. Any other?
Yeah, it, it might be helpful for, for David to resurrect all of the facts and figures from that last walkthrough when we were talking about a full V P I putting sidewalks in from Drake's to the church. Because I think they threw out some numbers. It'd be good to add timelines, construction dates, right? Yeah, it'd be good to have that to refresh on.
Can I jump, can I jump in with some some numbers and questions? David and I were actually communicating back and forth about that. Because I was having a hard time finding my notes on it. And in twenty twenty-one, the active transportation planner came and we did that really great and I felt illuminating walk. And at that time in twenty twenty-one numbers, we were looking at three hundred to three hundred and ten dollars a foot. And at that time, the, the overall scope looking at from the town office through Petunia Pump is just under a thousand feet. And then if we look at, say, the library to the church, you know, which of course that would be negotiable was around two thousand feet. So in twenty twenty-one numbers, that was around eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for that project within eighty-twenty share. You know, in today's numbers, according to inflation and whatnot, that would be just over a million dollars for the project. And I mean, I it, I hate it when I'm driving into meetings in the summer and I see families trying to walk along Main Street and, you know, having to basically jump off into people's front yards to avoid some folks that are, you know, maybe hugging the edge of the road too fast and going too fast and not paying attention. I'm terrified of the amount of money that is on the table here, but my conversation with David earlier is, you know, with the conversations the board has been having about the traffic issues and, you know, we've been dancing around basically the need for traffic calming in the center as well as accommodating a robust pedestrian population here in the center. You know, we're going on five years of meeting with the DOT and I, I fully support having another conversation and and, you know, maybe we're, maybe we're thinking. I, I feel like I'm going to go against my pattern of, of, you know, being concerned about financial implications, but perhaps we need to think outside of the box and look at engaging the DOT in a conversation about traffic calming and pedestrian accommodation. And my question for David was I, I don't remember in the DOT's you know, three to five-year planning, do any of these roads in question come up in their next three to five years or is that not even on the radar yet? And what would that mean in terms of having a bigger conversation about traffic calming and, and sidewalks?
Off the cuff, to the best of my knowledge, nothing is planned for any state road in Lincolnville with the exception of the bridge project out here on two thirty-five and possibly something on Route One in the couple of years out. But if you don't have the conversation with them, things never end up on the work plan. And I'm not sure about the current status of the village partnership initiative or the
Still, still ongoing. That's yeah, what I heard last week. Yeah.
Yeah. There, there will be an administration change next year. There may be different priorities, you know? But it's never too early to have a conversation with people, find out what's out, hope they're available.
Absolutely.
Susan Silverio again. Could I just add one more thing? The, the question I would love to pose the DOT is I, I love the idea of thinking outside the box. How about doing something more simple? You know, it turned out that the walkway between the boat club and Breezemere Park was a walkway. It wasn't a sidewalk with curbs and the whole spiel. You know, can't we have walkways around our village?
I just remembered something. I just remembered something when we did that walk, because I was on it as well. The gentleman Steve, I think his name was, from DOT, he mentioned that there are other things we could do too that would be cheaper, like a biking path or it was not the measurements where you have to follow all those measurements and regulations for a sidewalk. It was just enough for bikes and it was smaller than the sidewalk, but something like that is, is, I think I said that, and there might have been another thing. Way of doing it where it was gravel or something instead of cement, you know, pavement, but that's really expensive, the pavement. But anyways, I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, it sounds like there's definitely interest in proceeding to engage with DOT and see what our, what our options are. There isn't any other discussion?
I move to have the town administrator invite representatives of the main department of transportation to a future select board meeting to explain what programs might be available to the town regarding sidewalks in Lincolnville, San.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What about the lights? Because that was something that I already talked to David about and he said I needed to bring it up because the town would have to pay just to put up a couple more lights on, already on the telephone poles.
What would that look like, David? That's totally separate from DOT.
Why don't you?
Yeah, we, we need to vote on our.
Maybe, but vote on the motion and have a discussion of the lights. That's all right.
So we'll vote on our previous motion. Vice Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Number Ray?
Yes.
Number Tarantino?
Yes.
And my vote is yes.
Streetlights. We, the town lease our streetlights from Central Minne Power. I, off the cuff, I don't know the exact number, but it's less than ten. I think we have eight, six or eight that we pay for on a monthly basis. When you sign up for a streetlight, it's you basically guarantee a seven-year commitment because that's how long it takes to pay them back for investing in a street, in the light itself, or it used to be a seven year. We haven't put one up in quite a while. Seven-year commitments beyond the select board's capability to commit to. But you certainly can we can get pricing and then you can figure out if you want to pursue it and then you get the necessary approvals, which means the people vote to agree to sign a lease for a seven-year period or whatever the period is now.
Would it make sense to have, to ask our public facilities director to look at that these area in question and suggest a number to get some budget numbers for, so we have those?
Well, you, yeah, I mean, that's certainly possibility. I mean, the in all likelihood, the utility poles are two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet apart. Which I presume we're not going to have additional poles installed. Why not? The other thing that's we can certainly get some more information. The other thing that we've got to take into account is the type of light and direction. I mean, the ones we went to the last time when we converted, they're all LED now, which uses a lot less electricity, but you still have to basically pay for the light itself. There are options to towns can own streetlights now too. Some towns have opted to do that, but I don't really want to be climbing poles and putting up lights. But whatever you want to do. Rob looks like she has a question.
Well, I was wondering, you, you mentioned, you know, approved by the town. So an article in the annual town meeting?
Or a special?
Or a special beforehand?
Yeah. So that they can authorize, basically authorize you to commit to along, they'll commit to paying for it, sort of.
Yeah. Beyond our, our authority.
But at the same time, but at the same time, we can ask David or Matt to come up with some numbers. I'd like to suggest we do that.
Yeah. I don't think we need a motion for that.
Uh, just you the costs per light? And where they are, maybe we can get you a quick map and, yeah, I think, right, I think there's one at Heel Road. I think there's one at Petunia Pump, front of Walters.
There's one from Walters.
And there isn't, I don't think there's one from the library anymore because I think they used to.
It was out, I think.
They used to have one at the fire station. It got moved to the other fire station location, but we'll get that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing them? Thank you. We'll move forward to item number seven, where you need to become the board of assessors for a motion.
That we suspend our meeting? Is it too early for me?
No.
Okay. As the select board and that we convene as the board of assessors.
Moved and seconded. Vice Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Abate? Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
You're Tarantino?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Excellent. Joining us now?
Before Rob starts talking, didn't get a chance to talk to you about this today. We put the, the two assessive initiatives abatements first on the list. The supplemental tax and then the five breaking abatements.
Yeah, the board is yours. So the, the first couple items you'll see are just housekeeping, you know, my abatements that I initiated to correct errors, correct the, correct the record. And also with that is we discovered a longstanding lot that wasn't in the right ownership. It brought to our attention this couple of months ago. So we corrected that. So that's part of a packet that is just like, and things that I, I have initiated and there's no issues there. Just something for the board to consider.
So the first one we have here recommendation regarding forty-three and forty-four.
Let me ask, the, the amount that's written on our on our agenda is different than what's in.
Did that. I can't type. It should be fifteen, twenty-three, seventy-four.
I think we would start with motion and then discussion regarding that.
I move that the board approve abatement numbers two, five, two, six, dash, four, three, and two, five, two, six, dash, four, four, in the amount of one thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars, seventy-four cents.
Second. Moved and seconded. Before the vote, any discussion regarding these these two abatements? Being done? Member Dunn?
Yes.
Relate?
Yes.
Remember Tarantino?
Yes.
Remember Gary?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Motion passes. The next one of these abatement, two, five, two, six, four, four, I believe this is one you're talking about, Rob, that is, is the lot that needed to be assigned to a different owner?
Correct. Correct.
And actually did the abatement on that. You're now looking at the supplemental.
Right, right.
And so we've already done the abatement there. Look for a motion on this one.
I move with the board approve and sign the supplemental tax certificate and warrant for map twenty-two, lot one zero three.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this supplemental? Seeing done? Member Dunn?
Yes.
Relate?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Remember Gary?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. And now we have a series of requests. A series of these is regarding condos, correct?
Correct. The first three are all the same condominium complex.
And you? Can you? Can you explain? Or give us some background on any differences in how condos are. Assess then. I know there was a question I had in here also regarding.
So i- in preparation for the meeting, I kind of put a quick guideline together is how and why we have the authority to tax condominiums the way we do. But the idea is. In in statute, we're allowed to put a land value on every condominium unit. And the way we determine that land value is just like all of our other jobs is based on sales. Setting up new values this year is part of the revaluation, we had a multitude of sales in that condominium complex. Uh, because our approach is very factually driven, when we look at the sale prices of these condos. We can attribute so much of that sale price to the buildings, it's so big, it has. So many of this, so many of that on it, but that residual value, just like the way we value. Somebody who owns land in fee. There's a value in that sale attributed to the rights that that one particular condo has in the development. It is broken up into two sections. They have a right exclusively to the land at the condominium, their condominium unit sits on, it's spelled out in in the condominium flat plan. But they also have the right in common with everybody else to all the common spaces, all the common area, the parking lots, the driveways in and out. That is those. And those assets itself, we don't assess them individually, but part of the condo site value that we do. Establish is considering the rights in common they have with others. So no common element is something that's taxed specifically and separately, it's all in the value of that condo site. And regardless of. Part of the discussion in here from the taxpayers are, well, we have a one fifteenth interest in in this property. But that may be true, but that doesn't dictate the value, it's a. Our values are driven on just value, it's determined by market value, so if that one fifteenth interest. Ends up being two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars in the marketplace, that's the number that we choose. And hasn't, it's not tied to any sort of land acreage, because they don't own any of that lot in fee, they just have exclusive rights. And rights in common with others, and that's where the value comes from.
Okay, yeah, you answered my specific question, that one nineteen in this case, uh, uh, component uh, to that. Okay, other other questions for Rob before we move on to these? And now I look for a motion. We have several to get through.
Leave the first three on the list are of the same.
Yep.
I move the board of assessors deny the abatement request for Mitchell and Heidi Kaplan. For the reasons set forth in the assessors agent memo to the board dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, there's a further discussion. Member Dunn?
Yes.
Relate?
Yes.
I'm Tarantino?
Yes.
Member Gary?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Uh, the next one. Regarding the abatement request for James and Deborah.
I move with the board of assessors deny the abatement request for James and Deborah Mangia Payne. For the reasons set forth in the assessors agent memo to the board dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Being done? Member Dunn?
Yes.
Relate?
Uh, yes.
Member Tarantino?
Yes.
Member Gary?
Yes.
My vote is yes. And. At least first three, the next one, the paper best for. Uh, Jan Cody Warner revocable trust. For a motion.
I move with the board of assessors deny the abatement request for Jan Cody Warner revocable pass for the. Reasons set forth in the assessing agent memo to the board dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Being done? Member Dunn?
Yes.
Number late?
Yes.
Some Tarantino?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Okay, so there's three or so. We have two more.
I move with the board of assessors. Denied the abatement request for Stephanie and Daniel Elliott for the reasons set forth in the assessors agent memo to the board dated. December eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Being done? Member Dunn?
Yes.
Member late?
Yes.
Number A, I'm sorry, number Tarantino?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And we have one last one. Uh, bigger best for Bartley and May Lou Carhart.
I move the board of assessors deny the abatement request for Bartley and. May Lou Carhart for the reasons set forth in the assessors agent memo to the board dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Being done? Member Dunn?
Yes.
Relate?
Yes.
Member Tarantino?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. That finishes those and we need to. Move back to our meeting as a select board.
I move that we suspend our meeting as select board and that we convene as the board of assessors. Now, that should be the opposite. Excuse me, allow me to amend that to my move that we suspend our meeting as a board of assessors and. Convene as the select.
Second.
Number Dunn?
Yes.
Relate?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I'll let them know, I'll let them know.
Okay. Thank you, well, thank you, Mr. Gary.
Thank you, Rosie.
We are now back in session. Next on our agenda, don't run too far. Gary, next on our agenda is the cemetery trustees want to. Give us an update.
Thank you very much for having us. We are uh, missing two members tonight, um. Uh, Pat Shannon was not able to be here and um. Kim Clark um has um. One of these Zoom meetings that she's involved in and thought she'd be here, uh, but it's not gonna happen. Can see her down, but anyway, want to give you an update on uh, lots been happening, we've got a lot done. Fletcher Cemetery uh. Is complete. We we completed it, everything, the footstones are done, stones have been cleaned, um, we had a little. Um, incident up there with a little washout and the town um. Brought it to the town's attention and it came out, they did a beautiful job, talented, absolutely excellent job fixing it. If you've seen it, if you've seen it since then, and uh, that's that's been very well, uh, the boxes are up. Um, so um, that protect the stones from the snowplows, the one, there's two stones that are right next to the road. Uh, but other than that, Fletcher is. Up and looking very, very, very good, um. Cross. Which is halfway down the hill, uh, before you get to Billy Dickies, um, that is done. We've completed that, all the stones have been straightened, everything's been been up there. Um. We then moved to um. Um. Sylvester, but in between, we did something else to another little cemetery that's off. Um, the Greenacre Road and Steve, why don't you tell us what what happened up there, what you did up there?
Well, see that? Yeah, we found that all the chains had been taken off of the cement, the granite posts. So then I went out and I found a place in Sis. Sis Sisport that had some really rusted twenty foot chains. And so I bought those and I took them back to my shop. And then I went up to the Farah Cemetery and measured the distance between the posts. I cut the chains to fit, I bought a bunch of quick lengths, I sandblasted those, I spray painted them. And then I put all those chains back on the posts and it looks very nice. And I really wanted the rusted chains and let me tell you, they're rusted.
Then it's nice thick chains, great job, great job of that, I don't know if you've ever been there, but we just recently. Um, uh, within the years, so opened up the pathway to that, that that cemetery was completely hidden. Not not very many people know it, there's like what, three stones there, I think there's three stones in there. On a little knoll over the hill and um, we had um, Nick Berry went in and cut the path through.
And and stuff and uh, I'm in conversation right now with um. With the uh, drink waters who take care of uh, our other abandoned cemeteries. Uh, for them to give me a price on that for a spring and fall cleanup leaf blowing. Because there's no grass in there tomorrow or anything, but the pathway in uh, needs to be, you know, sticks fall down over the winter and stuff. And so, uh, but other than that, we need to go in and straighten the stones up now on that one. That 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 needs to be be straightened out, so yes, then we went to Sylvester. Which is um, down on Route One, the other side of the Ducktrap uh, Bridge and um. Um. It it had. It had gone by the wayside, uh, somebody had gone in and shotgun blasted one of the stones. Uh, blew a hole right through the stone, seriously, I I I've never seen that before, but but anyway, that's been repaired and. Um, Sandy, you want to talk about what we did down there or or?
What what we've done?
Cleaned off the tree branches that were hanging over and then there's a fence that's a white. Picket fence kind of thing, but it's plasticky, it's not wood, right? So that was like all moldy and nasty, so we got that all cleaned off and some of the caps were missing, so we got the caps. Steve got the caps, we got the caps put on it, so it's all cleaned up and it um. Not Aaron, what's the guy?
Owen.
Owen that does the work for us, even the headstone that's got the shotgun blast in it, he was able to piece it together like a puzzle. So he's got it repaired, but there's still a hole in it because he couldn't fix that part, but he righted up a lot of the other stones, cleaned them. I mean, we go out there and walk every couple of months to see what the progress has been on it and Sylvester's very nice and it's got the historical society did the QR. Code down there too. So and we have that a lot of the cemeteries that you can go and do the QR code and it will tell you about the cemetery and who's buried there. So and we've had people contact us that they have relatives, I think it's Sylvester and some of the different cemeteries.
And so. Um, it's cleaned up very nicely, all the footstones have been, uh, they're they're they have been dug out. And um. A lot of them have been reset. In um, in a seven, what we call us a seven and rocks have been, so everything is straight. And clean and um, I'd say that that um, that is. That is complete, that Sylvester's complete. Uh, for for many, many years, as you all know, a lot of these abandoned cemeteries have just. Gone, they just not much attention and and we've really brought them back now, um, um. One that we're quite pleased uh, that we finally got permission to do something with. Is the uh, Heel Cemetery, which is down here on um, Poland Road, on Poland Road. And um, that is Revolutionary War, um. Individual there, but there are, there are multiple graves in there. There's only one stone, but there are multiple graves, you see the in in the rocks, they put rocks up. I would say at one point in time, uh, like there were wooden crosses there and they rotted and, you know, gone, I mean. We're talking early, early eighteen hundreds, uh, that that cemetery. So we now have permission from the abutting landowners to go in there and uh, clean that up. And again, I'm planning on taking the drink waters uh, in there, Mr. Drinkwater and having them give us a price. So that I can figure out what my budget is going to be, which is coming up pretty quick, um, to do a fall. And spring cleanup also in their leaf blowing mason, but we also think because. Of the Revolutionary um, War individual that that really deserves um. A distinctive uh, fence of type and we'd like to do um, the granite post and the chain. Uh, around that also, we we know the where the area is, we've measured it, we know what's going on there. And so we'd like to. We'd like to do that, which the landowners. Again. The boundary line goes directly through the cemetery. But so we'd like to do that. Then um, the next thing that's really um, major project. Uh, is the Thomas Cemetery, that is really, really delicate, it really. Uh, needs a lot of work, uh, how many people know where the Thomas Cemetery is? Okay, it's off High Street, again, we have three cemeteries. We have three cemeteries that we take care of, there's actually four cemeteries on High Street, but we take care of uh, three of them. And the Thomas uh, is really needs uh, a lot of work, it's. Stones are broken, stones are tipped over, uh. The grass mowing is basically for the path to get there, but there's not much mowing once you get the cemetery itself, it's. It's uh. It it needs, it needs a lot of, it needs a lot of work, the stone work there, so I was supposed to have. I I I will have a a a cost on that for my budget time, I'm supposed to have it tonight, but it didn't show up. But anyway, um, what have I forgotten, uh, Jay?
I apologize, I have no voice. But I encourage everyone to come and visit, especially at this time of year, at least the ones that you can see from the road. And Sylvester and the Fletcher are especially uh, improved. And hard easy to get to, so please come and see for yourself all that's been accomplished.
I do remember one more thing again, um. We're also responsible for the Field Cemetery, which is at the end of North Cobb Town Road, if you go all the way down. Um, the road, uh, they have, there are two cemeteries on North Cobb Town Road. One is the Kendall Cemetery and the landowner uh, requests that nobody. Uh, nobody bother without any, he takes care of it and sends us pictures every year and and and. He's, he's responsible for that and uh, but the very end, again, there's one stone, but there are multiple graves there. If you get down just before you get to the gate, uh, at the end of North Cobb Town Road, there is the Field Cemetery. And also that I want to figure in a, um, there'll be no grass mowing, but I'd like to see. Um, at some point in time, we'd like to see a fence put up there, also a chain. Uh, fence, but for now, we want to do a fall and spring. Leaf blowing, clean it up, just just get it cleaned up, but there's no grass there and probably never will be. Uh, in that particular area, so just to give you a heads up of what's going on and. Uh, what a great team I have to work with, yes.
So if you guys know. You guys know about these old cemeteries, but a lot of these are on private land and we can't access. We have a lot of landowners that are like, you can't come on my property. So we have one guy that sends us a photo every year to say, yes, everything's fine, which it looks like the same photo every year, but sends it in. We put it in our records, but we've got countless little cemeteries, the Metcalfs are buried behind me and there's Civil War Revolutionary War soldiers there. But you can only get to it by going through my property to get around to it, which I always. to get around to it, which I always let Cecil do. When I first moved here, Cecil locked the door and said, we take care of the cemetery behind you, do you mind? And I'm like, I don't mind at all. So but it's but it's the property next door to me and you go through my property and cross, I think it's Gretchen's property and then you get around to her column's property plus. Um but we have quite a few that we can't do anymore. So we're trying to contact people and stay in their good graces and not step on anybody's toes, but let them know that we are trying to preserve history. So it's a challenge to say the least.
So again, that's where we're at. I just wanted to make sure that I want to do an update so that you know that this committee is really active in the town. We're really, really busy. And uh we meet, we meet once a month. We have one more meeting and then we won't be again until May, uh sometime in May. Uh because our secretary is going to Arizona. And we we just, we just can't work without not able to function. Any questions?
Other question, but just a a big thank you. Uh your committee has been very active and it's very visible. Um I I took the pleasure of doing the tour uh with uh with Rudy two years ago now. Several of the cemeteries and it's great to see. I welcome inviting everybody else to do the same.
Yes, I would be more than happy to take you.
But the the diligence that you guys are are showing and the respect we're providing the the families and the folks are very. I welcome any other discussion or questions.
Other than that. Great, thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is in regards to uh main DOT and the projects on Route One specifically um regarding sidewalks. Primarily from Route uh from the intersection of Route One Seventy Three uh up to Vikings in that uh region. And we'll hand this over to David for some initial commentary.
Yeah, so um uh Marty Rooting, the senior project manager for MDOT, uh sent a note or a letter uh looking for input on sidewalk replacements. They're still in their early stages of planning for both Route One from the Beach Road to the Camden Town Line where they left off with the project going on now. And then from roughly Carver Lane into Northport. Uh the letter specifically referred to the south southern portion. Um and like, sent him a note and said, you know, you only want input on that? And then that's what his second email in there talks about it being, no, they're looking for both both projects. Um their initial um when they reached out with the letter was regarding uh looking at replacing sidewalk from the Beach Road to roughly Green Tree Roasters. Even though the sidewalk currently goes to Viking, at one point went to Viking Lumber, um and that was it. Uh at a um up to a ninety percent share for what they're looking to replace. And anything after that would be at a greater share for the town would get back, max would be fifty percent state or federal funds. Um that varied uh pretty substantially from where we left off with DOT twenty years ago, maybe even ten years ago, um in terms of uh where sidewalks would or could go and cost shares. Um I, it seems like to me, they didn't say this in the letter, but it seems like they're focusing those sidewalks in areas with the slower speed limits, thirty or thirty-five, and everything else seems to be beyond that. Maybe the speed limit is based on density or something, I don't know. Um certainly last community, excuse me, conversation had been about replacing sidewalks where there always had been sidewalks. And then there's a very short stretch, probably a couple hundred feet long. I didn't measure it, but um from Howe Point Road through to the Duck Trap Bridge, which had sidewalk, a sidewalk constructed on it as well as the approaches to it. Um seems kind of foolish to have sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk, but that's me, but them. Um so, Tag, you're at, um I think at this point I would uh recommend that you communicate that um till we have more detail, we'd like to um consider sidewalks where there had been sidewalks plus the short stretch from Howe Point to Duck Trap Bridge. And keep open the conversation about share percentages.
Yeah, sure.
I think they'd like, I think they'd like to pin you down, but I didn't kind of dance on that one.
I guess, I just want to um mention that I think it's great that they're reaching out to us because there was a time where there was an unfortunate event right here that they indicated that they would do anything for us again. Um although, and that's why I think it's great they're reaching out and there is an offer there. Although I want to just reiterate what David said, don't really want to see us step back from what we had already had. Um unless we actually move positively forward. Um we want to try to rebuild what we have, you know what I mean? Um and I know that the cost share will probably change. Um they will probably just. I'm not looking forward to it changing, but um I think it's cool that we've got a conversation going initiated by the DOT.
I think so too, I agree. Got one or more thing to add and that would be uh since since I've been on the board, we've been talking sidewalks, we've been hearing about sidewalks before. And as you said earlier, we got to have them, everybody wants them, right? Uh I'm wondering when it would be a good time for uh the board to seriously consider putting money aside for the eventual need for a sidewalk. However it's structured, wherever it finds itself. Just great and budget in, proposed in proposing the budget, a a simple sidewalk fund. Capital Reserve Sidewalk Fund, I guess would be. So at some point down the road, this town might have close to or matching funds for a project. Which could be, which could slip away by the time it takes us to raise those funds. Yeah, the, anyway, uh and since budget time is coming up, I don't know how much work that would be to include a line. Just to get the seed money started, right? And uh even though we don't know what the seed's gonna.
Need to grow too.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh and see if the town, uh people in town want to commit to that. And if they don't, fine, cool.
Um just based on, I think Susan had mentioned the walkway idea. I didn't know whether that was also something we could ask them about. If it had to be a full blown sidewalk or if there could be this walkway idea next, you know, sounded like that might be a less expensive solution.
Worth of conversation. I think all, I think all options are on the table as far as they're concerned. A lot of the costs associated with um construction of the sidewalk is actually land acquisition costs for right away. And if you start putting in, I don't want to put words in DOT's mouth, if you start putting in walkways that aren't close to the road, then you're taking more land, which adds to the, you know, it's one of these cost conversation, but I certainly would, I mean, the existing sidewalks uh at the beach, um the original that were put in by the Village Improvement Association, I believe, uh those are more paths, they're separated, there's some greens, but for the vast majority of it, there's some green space between the sidewalk and the road. And I think the sidewalks probably predate the last time that road was actually reconstructed. Right, so, but I I wouldn't close the door to any option at this point.
As me, it's it's an area where, I mean, sadly, many of those sidewalks you barely see nowadays. But I think it's a trend of changing times. Uh there was a period where no one wanted to walk around and it seems like there's a huge resurgence and people actually getting out and moving around to be um and that district has definitely got more traffic down there nowadays. Um so seeing or or not losing what we've had, great, but but it, we need to cover it that way. Comment?
Yeah, I I have a modest proposal, Susan Silario. Uh I like the idea of starting a fund and um there's also been, as you know, great deal of conversation about traffic calming. If the town was to hire a deputy that could devote considerable amount of time to traffic control, uh there could be quite a revenue of from tickets for speeders. And that either could clearly pay their own position, you know, and then anything left over could go into the sidewalk fund. Make it a safe place to.
Not to throw cold water on Susan, Susan's idea, because I don't think it's a bad idea. Uh all traffic ticket monies go directly to the state of Maine.
Oh, is that right?
Correct. They, they, around the country, uh speed traps, and it can vary from state to state. But um they don't want towns funding their operations by writing tickets, right?
Oh.
It's not a bad idea.
Can we fund our operations with parking tickets?
That we can do.
Oh, oh, there you go.
Any other discussion on that? If not, uh does anybody want to make a motion?
I move to have the town administrator reply to the main DOT letter indicating our desire for sidewalk from Viking Lumber to the Beach Road and from Carver Lane to the existing sidewalk at the Duck Trap Bridge. And that's subject to further discussions with main DOT regarding cost share percentages, that it is the intent of the select board to seek any required local share.
Moved and well seconded, any further discussion? Place chair down?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the Tarantino?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Excellent. Next up, item number ten. Waldo County budget numbers have come in and they're was scary. Um David, you have any preference?
Sure, so last Monday after the board concluded their uh priorities workshop, went back to my desk and opened up my email and lo and behold, there was the notice from the Waldo County Clerk. Uh including the public hearing notice uh regarding the final budget meeting, which will be held this Friday at six P M in the Waldo County Commissioner's courtroom, thirty-nine B Spring Street, Belfast. Um although Robin has, or select person Tarantino has kept us informed that big changes might be coming. I think I picked myself up off the floor when I saw excluding jails, a fifty-five point six-six percent increase. Or including jails, a thirty-six point two-seven percent increase in the uh proposed expenditures um for Waldo County. Put that in real terms, real dollar terms, a twelve point seven million dollar budget going to seventeen point four million. And their non-property tax revenues um decreasing for the coming year slightly. Uh they only have one other source of revenue beyond the budgeted revenues and that's to the twenty-six communities that make up Waldo County. Um in twenty twenty-five, the town of Lincolnville paid roughly ten point eight percent of the county tax, total county tax to the tune of round numbers, one point three million dollars. Um I'm concerned as an administrator, I'm concerned as a tax collector, I'm concerned with the taxpayer that um a change of this substance will be challenging, perhaps devastating for some.
So I usually tend to immediately ask others to talk, but on this one here, um number one, uh the county needs to explain how we get, this is um it's all kinds of money added in areas, but nothing has been moved. Our IT budget went up dramatically, or this went up dramatically, but no monies have have moved from other places. Um it's just all, all generally add um uh to this extent. And so it points to some serious mistakes or failures that have been uh happening in their process uh over the last several years. And uh they owe it to us, but more they owe it to the to the taxpayers of every one of our communities as to what's going on here. Um there needs to be a discussion over this can't be a one-year fix. If this is truly what it's going to look like, uh a one-year fix is as David just stated, it'd be devastating to 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 men. Um and I think from where we stand, we uh need to make sure several of us attend this meeting coming up. Um in addition to the meeting, uh I feel we should uh send a letter uh to the county commissioners uh with directly stating our concerns and our expectations uh for what uh the explanation they owe us, uh which is not present. We have the pleasure of having some information that's been shared to us uh by Robin, but uh um we need more. And lastly, um we probably have no recourse. Uh but we need to understand what our options are um in pushing back on this type of significant increase that right now doesn't make sense. Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, everything that you just said, Steve, and and my, I guess I have several questions slash statements. But my first one for either David and or Robin is what recourse do we have as the second largest contributor to the county budget after Belfast? I mean, I'm I'm not saying that we're more important than any other community in Waldo County, but you know, I have to believe that there's some some recourse for the communities, most of which run on much on on equally humble, if not more humble budgets than we run. And so that's my first question is what, what recourse do we have to vote on this?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know anything about this, but.
You, in essence, you don't have any particular recourse or a vote once the budget is established. If um I believe the anticip, well, I don't believe the anticipation. The anticipation of Waldo County is that after the public hearing concludes on Friday, that a vote will be taken that will establish the Waldo County twenty twenty-six budget. Once the budget is established, um it's basically simple math for whoever in the county to say what's your town's state valuation versus the state valuation of the entire county? And that's your share. Uh now, that's very simplified because the county commissioners will take the expenditure budget, subtract the revenues and any other things that they may have access to for funds, but um that's your share. And then the county commissioners send you all as assessors, I believe, or maybe as select board members. Um, a letter that says county budget's been established, it's X number of dollars, your share for the town of Lincolnville is this. And it's due by this date, and if you don't pay by this date, we start charging you interest. You'll be done.
Okay, that's horrifying. That's horrifying. And uh, um, if I can continue, Steve, um, you know, I want to make it clear, you know, that it it's become very clear through Robin's consistent updates that the budget, the county budget committee works quite hard to look at the budget very closely. Um, and so my sentiments go above the budget committee to the commissioners, and I think it is highly irresponsible to disseminate a packet of information such as they had with these increases and rather interesting numbers of expending millions of dollars more annually than they've actually budgeted with no explanation of where those additional millions and millions of dollars have come from. And so to Steve's point of of uh, sharing some kind of communication with the commissioners and the budget committee, um, I feel that the communities of Waldo County deserve not just an explanation of what we have been presented here, but an explanation of what led us to this, because this isn't just a revelation that happened within this fiscal year. Why has this not been a conversation that we have been leading up to? Which I would ask any fiscal agents of taxpayers to to consider. I mean, it just, it 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 smacks of gross negligence, and I recognize that there have been some unfortunate circumstances which Robin has made us aware of, but I mean, look at what our community did when the school proposed, what was it, a twenty five percent budget increase roughly? And you know, we're talking about fif- over fifty five percent increase of which we're paying ten point eight percent. So um, you know, I I just, I I feel that we are owed, we as a county, the communities in the county that pay these bills are owed an explanation and a justification for where has the money come from? Why has it been managed in the way that it has been? And what are they going to do to ensure in the future that situations like this aren't going to happen again? So yeah, I guess that's the long and the short of it.
Other commentary questions?
Uh, I I would just uh, just kind of echo what you guys have said before. I think like some explaining from county is definitely due. Um, I don't know how much information they'll be willing to give us, but I think they owe us an effort to provide by all means, yeah.
Absolutely. I don't I don't see how I don't see how this can be absorbed by any of the towns in this town.
Yeah.
I just don't see how it can be done. The numbers are just mind-boggling.
What uh, what numbers leave, they'll be able to attend the meeting on this Friday?
Uh, I plan on going.
It's uh.
Fri- Friday at six o'clock.
Sounds fast. Friday, this Friday at six P M.
I have to ask how I count, because I'm already at the meeting in my capacity as budget committee member. Do I also wear a select forty hat as far as forum for?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think you can take off your select board member. I don't. If if there's, if there's a discussion regarding municipal business and two of the other members were going and you were already there, I just say, you know, it's easy enough to put it on an agenda, just let the public know.
Sure.
I think we um, the board should consider all, I mean, it's not just for select board members, it's for the public as you go, and I think you should also consider disseminating this to people in your circle that um, there are implications behind this, and it would be you know, it's always much better to hear things firsthand than it is to put it through somebody else's filter before it gets to you. And also allows people a chance to say, I don't know, you know, I don't know how I'm gonna do it or whatever. Or I'll write the check for the entire county, whatever that somebody wants to do.
I know, I plan on attending, instead you will.
Yeah, I'll try.
I'll do the best that I can to be there.
Um.
I think I'd rather issue, I'll I'll put together the agenda, and if only two of you manage to get there, so be it.
I do want to say for anyone listening, um, who hasn't necessarily listened through previous select board meetings to our update section that we usually do at the tail end, um, that and I'm not making any, this is not an apology for the county, this is just what I perceive as having been at all these budget committee meetings. Um, there's a really big increase in employee benefits and um, I think it's primarily because of a change in county commissioners. Um, we have a new county commissioner, not for our part of the county, but um, who um, has brought in some strong opinions that we've, you know, been seriously underfunding the county's employee health plan. And they're basically trying to fix it all in one year in a very conservative way, and that's, I mean, we've already chopped out, honestly, a couple of million from this, and and I do personally, I'm fighting to have at least another million taken out specifically from the employee benefits, because I, from the health insurance, I I think they're being way too conservative in what they feel that they need to do this year for, you know, a possible catastrophic health issue. Um, and yeah, I mean, that's in large part, this huge increase is directly attributable to this. Uh, the other things that the county does have is it's very payroll-heavy, and so there aren't a lot of discretionary areas where you can really bring things back. I I know that none of the um, none of the union contracts that I'm aware of had anything more than, you know, three percent cost of living increases kind of a thing, but um, but yeah, there's the, I think the the main area that we might be able to affect this on is in the employee health plan. Um, and then they also have this information technology where they've pulled everything together into one department so that they're managing all of the information technology and and it was a huge surprise, I have to admit, to everyone on the budget committee to see that their budget went from roughly hundred and fifty thousand last year to, you know, if a million this year, which we we brought that down to eight hundred and fifty thousand, but that's still um. It was just a real shocker that, you know, I don't think our county is the first county or municipality, for that matter, to be kind of funding things from reserve accounts and sort of off the books and not making it as aware. I mean, we knew as a budget committee that they had all these different, you know, things going on with information technology, but we were not aware that of the magnitude of what they were paying kind of off the books, which again, I think the late, the newest county commissioner is very much dedicated to more transparency, and that's part of why stuff's been moved into the budget. Um.
Okay.
I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. Um, lastly, I do believe we should send something in writing to uh, the commissioners. Uh, do we want to authorize David to draft a letter ever have? Do we want that to come from the whole board? David, myself, what is the pleasure or recommendation of other board members?
Well, I'd like to see it go out sooner than later.
Exactly.
And if we have a draft coming back to us, it's gonna be too late, probably. Let's just have you guys send it out, and you, the two of you want to get together, put your names to it, that'd be fine by me.
Would somebody like to make them?
I just did, didn't I?
No, no, okay, uh. Just for the record, I wrote down that select board member Ray motion
Yeah.
that the the task of communicating the select board's concerns with the FY twenty six Waldo County budget be delegated to Chair Hand and Town Administrator Kenny.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, vice chair done?
Yes.
Remember Lee?
Yes.
Remember Ray?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving along. We have harbor fee schedule to take.
Yeah, so the harbor ordinance requires that um, uh, harbor committee make its recommendations regarding harbor user fees in the month of November, which the harbor committee provided to in November. Uh, and that the board act on that during the month of December so that those can go out in January. Uh. You have in your packet the current fee schedule, which the harbor committee recommended go out by five percent rounded to the nearest dollar. And you have the proposed fee schedule in there. The only thing that isn't is the mooring late fee, which recommended the same two hundred and fifty dollars, he says, with a great hesitancy. Um, yeah, boring inspection late fee at two hundred and fifty dollars.
Excellent. I see no issues with this, so. What for a motion?
I'm with the board adopt the harbor committee recommended harbor fee schedule for two thousand twenty six, along with a mooring inspection late fee of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved and well seconded, any further discussion? Seeing done? Vice Chair done?
Yes.
Remember Lee?
Yes.
Remember Ray?
Yes.
Remember Tarantino?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. And we also need to approve our qualified mooring inspectors.
Yes, so the harbor ordinance requires the harbor master to provide a preliminary list for the board's consideration, which we did earlier. And now you have that same list back in your packet again. We did contact, deputy contacted the people that were on the list to see if they wish to continue. Have not been contacted by anybody new in the business, so it's a famous last year.
I move with the board approve the harbor masters recommended list of qualified mooring inspectors for two thousand twenty six.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing done, vice chair done?
Yes.
Remember Lee?
Yes.
Remember Ray?
Yes.
Remember Tarantino?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Excellent. Moving right along, there's several items left, uh. Discussion regarding Calderwood Lane and removing the temporary post of replacement of that.
In August of last year, the select board put the temporary weight limit on Calderwood Lane, uh, which we had just finished investing hundreds of thousands of dollars, and there was a concern that um, um, large volume of material will be trucked across that road. Uh, that project is complete or pretty close to complete. Um, they managed to find a different way in there as well as take some material elsewhere. Uh, don't really is road commissioner or town administrator seeing you need to continue with the weight restrictions unless board wishes to.
I move with the board who sent the temporary weight limit established on August twelfth, two thousand twenty four for Calderwood Lane.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion on this side? Seeing none, vice chair done?
Yes.
Remember Lee?
Yes.
Remember Ray?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Excellent. Here on to item number thirteen. Uh, invitation to visit our fire stations.
Yeah, um, after the last meeting um, with the fire station buildings committee uh, talked about uh, the possible replacement of the beach station, there was some discussion about uh, the state, the existing beach station, as well as the center station, the chief and I had a brief conversation about uh, it might benefit everybody to actually have a tour of those stations. I understand some of the shortcomings and some of the pros and cons. Um, and so we've he's extended an invitation. Uh, also thought maybe like want to look at the existing or the land that was purchased for the replacement beach station. That might be a little more challenging or problematic, given the fact it gets dark at, you know, what, two in the afternoon now, or so it seems. But uh, the suggestion was that we at least do a tour of the interior of the two existing stations, possibly on an off Monday night. And then we looked at the calendar to say that's December twenty ninth, January fifth, the next off Mondays.
Excellent. I think it's a great idea to get out to both facilities, so maybe we would be able to both on whichever evening. Uh, we we would think here, I do believe we can think we, if if anything, make sure all of us know where the land is. Um, I think most of us do probably to uh, be clear and look at maybe a map of the boundaries of that, but I think we can postpone walking, trumping around out there uh, at this point in the year.
And also be willing to take, if somebody wants to go, if they realize I can take you down and show you. The bulk of that pretty easily.
Yeah. So what is the pleasure of the board regarding a night for tour?
I'm good with either one.
Yeah, me too.
I can.
I would. Oh, sorry. Uh, yeah, I'd err on the side of January with ambitious hope that I may not be in town.
This is home. That sounds bad at all.
Uh, whatever.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Who would you prefer?
Um, evil, um, I think, I think I think evil.
So it's sounding like
January.
January, yeah. Okay. Let's make it happen.
Do you want to meet at the beach station itself and then work our way back towards the center station, or do you want to do it the other way? Or do you want to meet here and get in a car and drive there? What do you want to do?
I would say meet at the center station first.
Meet at the center station. Okay.
Then we can, however people transit to the beach, they can go disseminate from there. Okay.
Are we talking six o'clock?
Think that would be fun. I can't even earlier, there would be tough.
Six five by me.
Yeah. Six P M.
Six P M. Center Fire Station, January fifth, twenty twenty six.
Correct.
Okay. I'll let the chief know.
Excellent, thank you. Moving along, uh. So we need to set some dates for the budget process, town meeting, election schedule.
Yeah, so while we're in the scheduling mode, um, you have the kind of the internal working document uh, that has most of, not all, but most of the dates on it uh, for the upcoming town meeting in June of next year, believe it or not. Um, we usually work our way back from that um, from town meeting date, the election date itself. Um, typically, we piggyback our election date with the state election, which will be on Tuesday, June ninth. Um, if that date works for local elections, your gathering for town meeting for the open portion has to be done within seven days of that. Uh, for the last, I don't know, eight, ten years, we've been meeting on the Thursday evening after. But that's solely up to you, as long as the town charter says we have to do it within seven days of one another. And once those dates are set, we've got a couple others we need to back up. It will automatically determine like nomination papers that. Um, the others are. Um, the others are other key dates are. Currently listed here is February tenth and February twelfth. For the budget presentation, we'd like to set those schedules so we can alert people as to what the dates actually are when we anticipate, so they can be here. Um, and get the room scheduled. Skips the eleventh because that is, uh. By the wood night.
So. I personally don't see anything wrong with the, uh, host schedule and we've. Uh, it's worked quite well for us over the last several years. Anybody, if anyone else has a problem, we, we give them a motion.
I move that the annual town meeting in June twenty twenty-six be conducted with ballot voting on Tuesday, June ninth, twenty twenty-six. Followed by open portion of town meeting on Thursday, June eleventh. Twenty twenty-six at six P M. And that the annual town meeting warrant be prepared to indicate as such.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion on this schedule? Being that. Vice chair done?
Yes.
Remember Lee?
Yes.
Remember Ray?
Yes.
Remember Tarantino?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Next. Item number fourteen is establish the process and timeline for. Annual performance review of our town administrator. The process the last, uh. Several years has gone quite well with the distribution of a. Of a questionnaire to each of us.
Hmm.
Um. Previous years, it's, uh, I would go to our chair, our, our chair, um. Which will consolidate and then we'll schedule a. Meeting to discuss that, uh, with David. Does anybody have any recommended changes to the processes we've been following in the last several years?
Well, um. No, I think it works really well, but and, and more, more to the point, it's actually kind of a tradition that we have. So in that spirit, I'd kind of like to see all of the work again being dumped back to Laidley. Uh, on that one weekend before she's got to get it done.
This is the one reason why I gave up the chair.
I can't top that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Is that a no?
No, I wouldn't want to deny Steve the pleasure. I, I, I will say though that just for having done it for so long, it, it is really. Valuable when folks take the time, not only to just. Circle a score number, but to offer some constructive thoughts or accolades for David's performance. Or the, or the staff, you know, it's, it's always rewarding to have some, um. Some higher level of interaction.
Yes. Absolutely, um. I'm trying to recall and it's escaping me, but, uh. The document that we've used, is that something you circulated lately or David has it in?
I typically circulate the blank, they're both electronically and paper for those that would like.
Yeah.
Paper or electronic and, but they come back to the chair.
Yes. My, my, uh. What percentage have come in, uh, paper versus electronic?
Uh, it's always been a real mix as well as, uh, return times, which, um. Yeah, so you know, it's, it's up to you how much, how much time you need or want, but.
Yeah.
It's always nice to at least have the weekend because it, it takes a little bit.
Yes, absolutely. So we should pick a date. So it would be by the second board meeting in January. And so by the Friday. I'll say Friday, by the Friday. Before that board meeting, I would need the.
Would that be the twenty-third, is that right? No.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Um, the second meeting that we're having is the twenty-sixth, okay, good.
Yeah, by six, by fifth.
Yeah.
So by twenty-third, they'd be turned in. And my absolute preference is to receive electronically, but if you can. If you can have them to me in paper for it, I'd deal. Electronic is. Much. I don't like, I think we need anything else on that. Got that, figured that. Excellent. Uh. Select person update time. Laidley.
I'm super proud I made it through the whole meeting.
Okay. It's delayed, I do not have anything. Mister Ray?
Oh, I do not have anything either.
Hey, Robin?
I don't think I have anything to add to what. Oh, actually, I do have one thing, no, I just realized. I'm not sure everybody realizes that at least as far as our county's concerned, twenty twenty-six is one of those twenty-seven pay period years. Which also doesn't help any that there's four percent increase right off the bat because of the extra pay period. For all of the payroll, which. That's all.
Gotcha, um. Only item I have is in regards to the. Uh, school, um, so one of the, um. Devices that they've been, uh, lacking has arrived and been installed, um. The purposes, uh, as we mentioned before, both, for both boilers work, they're running on one, which is the intent. Um, one of the devices, I can't think of the name of that right now, it needs to be installed in the stacks. Has arrived and been installed, the other is not, and they still not, because of that, they haven't done any. Full commissioning with Eastman on site, uh, et cetera. There were some water leaks that happens, um. Uh, in the system, um, I'm not sure of the other details, it's no, they did find the source of the water leak and. And address.
And I have supplemental for the administrators report, which you talked, totally triggered my mind. Uh, last Friday morning, we had, um. Experiencing sometime between Thursday and Friday, we experienced a failure with the propane boiler. That does the old portion of the building and the supplemental heat out here with heat pumps can't keep up. Um. Fortunately, our Jim's burner service arrived promptly after we called them. And twenty minutes later, they were out the door and everything was funky, or a sensor had. Had a loose connection or something, which they diagnosed and. Reconnected and fired up and it's worked fine since. Um, it was nice to have the code officer come in at five thirty in the morning and recognize that, hmm. Something wasn't quite right on the coldest morning of the year, always. Uh, but Jim's came quickly, took care of it, shouldn't be a problem again and. Hasn't been, so.
Excellent. I had one other item, uh. I read today in a previous, uh, work meeting, um, we had discussed. Um. Floating houses. Uh, and I saw today that, uh, uh, a new law has been put in place. Uh, and it was sent out by V I F W, Department of Services and stuff, but that. New law is prohibiting, um, floating houses and such. Uh, throughout states and there's exclusions that people can apply for. But, um. And we have the tracker and payroll warrants. I will the board approve and sign the treasures and payroll warrants.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I have a question. Would, uh, you've got a. Payment for three hundred and eighty-six dollars to Black Horse Inn.
Yeah.
Using that as a place for.
General housing, yeah, general assistance, somebody came in, completed application for assistance, there are exciting there. Qualified for G A and.
The other. Um. Chair done?
Yes.
Remember Lee?
Yes.
Remember Ray?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
My vote is yes. We have one last question.
And move that we adjourn.
Second.
Well, there.
Wait for that, yeah.
Vice chair done?
Yes.
Remember Lee?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Tarantino?
Yes.
My vote is yes. We are.